Let me call the order. Regular meeting of the City Council of City of Pearland for Monday, September the 28th, 2020, and it being at least 6:30. Also, we will be televising and video conferencing this meeting today. Or tonight, rather. Because of COVID-19 pandemic. And we are proceeding now to formally open the call to order, which is item number one on our agenda. Moving to item number two, in which we will open the meeting in a grand fashion, with Hernandez doing an invocation and Councilmember Moore doing the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. Everyone could please bow your heads with me as we pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for yet another wonderful, beautiful day. The weather today was amazing. It was a wonderful reminder that you've given us just a beautiful life to enjoy. And thank you so much for the opportunity for us to continue to come together, to, you know, look at all of the opportunities that we have to lead our city and continue moving things forward to serve our constituents in a way that will continue to improve their quality of life and give them opportunity. Hopefully, we can come together as a community through your will to move beyond this pandemic and all of the other things that are happening in our country right now under your ever-merciful watch. We do always strive to do the best for those who have put their trust in us as we put our trust and faith in you. And I say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Member Moore?
Thank you. If you would, please join me in pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now our Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
And that is how our City of Pearland council meeting should begin. Moving in our agenda to item number three, which is a roll call and certification quorum. Our mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, has just certified that all of our council members here. So, Madam Secretary, I certify a quorum for tonight's meeting. Moving to item number four, citizen comments. Mayor Pro Tim Little will conduct this item.
Thank you, Mayor. We have three systems wishing to speak tonight. Please state your name and your address before you start. You'll have three minutes to talk. The first person to sign up is Jimmy Davis. Mr. Davis, are you on?
Yes, I'm speaking on behalf of the Pearland Water Board and Discussion Group. I hope I can have a little bit more than three minutes. Gentlemen, when this started February 2020, I sought out, as many residents have asked, just for some basic information. What were the complaints that caused us to make a major policy change? And when did we discover the problem? I asked the city secretary how to get that information. Our city manager told me there was no record of any complaints that they made to change. I followed that up with the Public Information Act request. They was told in writing there were no complaints of any resident between January 1, 2018, and June 30, 2018. After talking with council about how that's rather incredulously made a big change, I was told to revise my request. So I did revise the request as directed. I made it from December 1, 2017, to July 31, 2018. I received records, and I'm still receiving today because the city will not release them, and they won't say when I'll have all the records. But every two weeks, they send me some files. And I want to know how they came up with the search. I asked for the search parameters because there's been many conversations with city leadership, city attorney, and city IT about how they do their searches and to help them better give me the information I'm seeking. I listed search parameters on my two requests, which is the only thing that changed were dates. And the first request had three search phrases, two of which wanted to be exact same, except one had an F added to the end of it. Water complaint versus water complaint. They considered those unique, and that's the one that produced no records. The follow-up request with the revised date ranges, IT went to great measures to specifically exclude any documents between January 1 and June 30 from their records. I got the query. They specifically excluded that period. Problem is, they messed up and they sent me emails that indeed shows several resident complaints from January 1 to June 30, 2018. The city just thought to hide them from us, from the residents. I don't know why, other than the fact that might prove our city manager wrong. And the search for answers about when they discovered the problem, I am sitting today with more than 20 documents that the city has said I should have released, I should have received, but they won't turn them over. The city was ordered by the Attorney General to turn over documents that they sought a ruling over. The city chose to sit on the documents for three weeks until I asked for them. Three weeks after getting the Attorney General order to turn it over. The water sewer revenue report indicates, we were told in 2019 that a revenue shortage in August, they said, dry weather caused revenue to be down, and they had to increase our water rates. The 13th Water Sewer Revenue Report for fiscal year 2019 indicates that revenue was over the prior year, $851,658. And they finished fiscal year 2019, $2,451,661 over their minimum budget. And yet, they told us it was because of dry weather that they had to raise the rates. Someone confronted with the problem that they reduced the days billed by 12 and a half percent, but said revenue was down 7% because of weather, and they raised our rates. And when we brought this to light and said, roll our rates back, they refused. And city council, y'all are protecting this, y'all are enabling them. And that's the problem. We continue to be overbilled for our water. And now, if we want to catch up, the city has told us they're going to penalize us two months of base charges. This is unacceptable, and the residents are watching work on you to step up and do your job and hold people accountable. Thank you.
The next speaker up is Jeff Hunkle.
Thank you. Jeff Hunkle, 3912 Oakwood Drive North, Pearland, Texas 77581. I first want to again commend council for adopting new lower tax rate of 72 cents. A lot of people have been complaining about house appraisals going up even without renovations being done. And this is one way to help lessen the tax burden on the people, so thank you. Next, I'd like to discuss the budget. I have been involved from the very beginning, and I appreciate all of the hard work that has been done by city staff and council to get to the point where we are today. I'd like to spend a special kudos to Mr. John McCarter for his painstakingly attention to detail, his ability to present so much data and to follow up with the changes council has suggested during this process. Although I do not agree with all of the items in the budget this year, I understand the process much better, where I'd like to offer some suggestions for next year. During the first budget meeting, the entire budget was presented and dropped into the laps of council for seven members to review, digest, and offer suggestions, all without input from citizens. I would like to start the process with high-level goals before we even get into the details of the budget and treat it like a business project. Discuss with citizens' input of what we want to accomplish this year. Since we had a shortfall for the streets and sidewalks, can that be a goal? Bringing up the salaries of police, fire, and EMS to be competitive with other cities could be a goal. Then we list all of the ongoing projects we have on the books and new projects that have not yet started. After that, let's talk money. Highlight every revenue source the city will have that year and what this source can be used to fund. Theo's, Geo's, property taxes, et cetera. Color code them to match the projects we listed. Discuss how much do we want to use to pay down the debt. That amount gets taken out from the top, just like my household budget. Then list all of the expenditures and projects under each type of revenue source. Once you used all of that money in that column, in order to add a project, you need to remove one on the list. Then stick to the plan and follow it through instead of increasing taxes or the debt. We need to start putting projects on hold and not accept everything that comes across the agenda. Finally, I'd like to discuss new business item number 14 of waste management, increasing their base rate to $18.11. A citizen asked me to bring this up and said, waste management costs are dropping, fuel costs are down, and employees haven't gotten a raise. And their point was that this is a money grab during the COVID crisis. Adding to this citizen's comment, I see the recycling bin costs $65 and include $1.82 in the base charge. This would mean each bin would be paid off in three years. When does this charge go away? Thank you, and I suggest that you both know on this measure tonight. Thank you for your time and attention, and have a good night.
All right, the third speaker is Leo Walker. Mr. Walker, are you present?
Yes, sir, I am. Leo Walker, 314 Rustic Lane, and thank you for the time. I'm here this evening with the privilege and honor of inviting everyone to join our annual Pearland Veterans Day Walk this year in November. We've appreciated the tremendous support from the city, the business community, all the citizens and members of the community over these past seven years that we've been organizing this walk as a way to honor Pearland veterans and also raise money for local nonprofit organizations that support the veterans and the families of veterans who are battling PTSD as a result of their service. So this year, it is going to be easier than ever to be part of the Veterans Day Walk because we have made it virtual. So you don't have to worry about a certain day or time or when you're available, you can walk anywhere in the city of Pearland, any of the wonderful city parks, along city streets, in your neighborhood, in your subdivision, in your community, wherever is enjoyable for you with your family and friends, folks from your church, your businesses. And we just invite everybody to participate. Anytime between November 7th and the 14th this year will be a virtual walk. And you can register online at pearlandwalk.org. Pearland Walk could not be easier to remember. It's a great way to show that we have not forgotten the service of our veterans. And I know there are a number of you on the council, and I'm sure among the city staff there as well. We thank you all for your service and just want you to know that we appreciate it and are doing the walk to honor and remember you and the sacrifices that you and your families have made in service to the country. So we invite everyone to register. You do need to register in advance. We are not doing a large group gathering this year for obvious reasons. So you must register in advance. We will send you out your walkers bib with your number with the logos of all our great sponsors on that bib for you to wear and to post and give a shout out and a thank you to those who are sponsoring the walk. Everyone who does register will receive the event t-shirt and a wonderful custom-designed challenge coin. So again, just invite everybody to go to pearlandwalk.org and register for this year's Veterans Day Walk. We thank you all for your support over the years and hope to see you again this year. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walker and the other speakers. Mayor, that completes our public speakers. Mayor?
Okay, complete your speaker program.
It does, Mayor.
Okay. Moving to item number five, which is a consent agenda items. And Mayor Pro Tim, there's items to be removed from the consent agenda.
Mayor, no items to be removed.
No item be removed. Move to item number A, all the way through the consent agenda program. Councilmember Orlando.
Consideration and possible action on the consent agenda items A through, I'm not seeing the last one here. My screen is frozen. Sorry, A through G, so moved.
Second, more.
Motion second on the floor. Madam Secretary, I believe we have motion second on the floor.
Councilmember Orlando?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez? Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owen?
Aye.
Motion pass to seven to zero to approve consent items A through G.
Okay. Moving to item six on our agenda, which is items removed from the consent agenda. And I put a big zero there. None? Item seven is new business. Councilmember Carbone, would you lead off the new business items?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action resolution R 2020-181, so moved.
Second, this is more.
Motion on the floor. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Good evening. It's a pleasure to bring to you this item, which is very important strategically for the city of Pearland. And as such, this item is in some ways the culmination of years and years of work and prior investments on the part of the city. And that is to build our own surface water treatment plant on the canal. That'll provide a source of water that is dedicated under our control and will provide the quantities that we need for the city today and tomorrow. So we've been going through this construction manager risk process. It's been working very well for us, successful win-win with us and the contractor and the professionals on that with Pepper Lawson. Tonight's the actual construction award for the $136 million that you see here that is inclusive of items the council's already awarded. It's detailed in the agenda item. So we spent on the order of magnitude already $44 million to get to this point. So this is the formalization of the guaranteed maximum price inclusive of those items we rewarded. We're in good shape on a budget perspective. We have about a 10% contingency on the total project cost at this stage. And, you know, we look forward to continuing this. This is a very complex project, involves lots of elements, regulatory issues. But we should be in a position to have finished water out of this plant on or about our first quarter of 2023, second quarter of 2023. So with that, I'll put it back to you, Mayor, and look forward to any discussion or questions.
Good staff report. Council, have any question or comment based on staff report?
Yes, sir. This is Woody. I've got a couple of questions on here. I think that since this is a guaranteed maximum price that we're getting right now, that should be read into this action, this resolution, that dollar amount, since this is a guaranteed maximum price through that. So, and the other thing I'd like to say, you know, it comes in here and Clay talks about when this comes to fruition, I actually own this, we're going to drop the city of Houston that we're doing take or pay. Is that the city of Houston take or pay on the west side?
So we'll continue to have that option as another source of water. But we'll be able to, we've exceeded the amounts in the past. We've had high demand, so they'll take away that need when we have high flows.
Okay, going back in time on this, this was one of the main reasons that we are going with the water plants is to reduce that cost on the take and pay on that one because it's the highest, and it has had an increase over the last five or six years. Every year, it would go that way as a part of that. I think, you know, I just sort of believe on here that we should read that dollar value in on a guaranteed maximum price and go from that point on. I think it should be drawn back up and read into the proceedings on that.
Member Owens, I believe the number is included in the resolution that's attached to the item.
All right, so it can't be exceeded unless it comes back to council for anything if it's read into the date. And glad to see you back off vacation, Trent. So that, when we got into this program, Trent, you can answer this one, that Texas Water Development Board, we brought into that, actually to get into it at a lower rate of interest. What was the total amount that we're looking at borrowing from them?
I believe the total amount from TWDB is around $160 million. 162.
It's on page 108 of 549. The revenue sources are in there and the different rates, they're not distinguishing, they look like on the TWDBs. But that sounds right, what you authorized, the 165.
Okay, so we got into that, so we get a lower rate of interest on that. And we're selling, I see that we're going through, we're selling bonds now. Revenue bonds, is that going to be used to pay back the Texas Water Development Board?
That is the Texas Water Development Board bonds. And the number for the Texas Water Development Boards is 154 million. So everything you see, the 149 that's been sold to date, that's all TWDB.
Okay, so we're looking at 178 million total. But it says water revenue bonds and impact fee debt.
And then that future bond amount will be looked at as we work through the project and whether or not, how much of that we need to sell.
Okay, because I was looking, this goes back to 2017 bonds. And I think that was a little bit forward done, the one for the Texas Water Development Board. And as we go through here, Trent, I think we've hit some delays based upon getting approval from Texas Water Development Board. Do you see anything that those delays in pushing this out another year or so, is this going to have any impact on the money that we have and the costage contracts?
No, sir. I believe at this point, we've worked through everything with TWDB. We're very close on the final few things there and, you know, ready to move forward with the final GMP, which will allow us to proceed with construction. And that establishes the schedule moving forward.
Okay. That's all I got.
Anything other questions or comment based on our staff report?
Yes, Mayor. Trent, I just kind of follow up with the last comment that Member Owens brought up. So what's left unaddressed on the comments from TWDB?
I think Robert just jumped on, and he can answer the details on that if we have anything left.
Councilman Perez, we've been working diligently with TWDB, finalizing all their packages. And we've gotten blessings and moving forward along with TCEQ as well, finalizing their checklist. And moving forward, we don't see any more hurdles impeding the way. It's just all their procedures, not ours. Part of it is dealing alongside with TWDB associated with alternative procurement. We got the opportunity with this project to help educate them and teach them on the process to help facilitate moving forward. So it was kind of a win-win. So when our next projects come through, hopefully, we've greased the wheels and they understand that process well, so moving from there. But it's full steam ahead now.
Okay, so we feel confident in the completeness of the design. We don't have any comments that come in and modify the budget significantly to where we'd have to dig deep into contingency.
Nope. That's why they have a guaranteed maximum price, and they've been with us since the beginning.
Okay.
Any other question?
This, I just feel more comfortable if we have the approvals before we entered in the contract. But if we feel comfortable in the last phase with the GMP set and enough contingency, I'm fine adopting it. But I think in the future, we really need to be, we need to be reticent about awarding contracts for plans that are not yet approved.
Councilman Perez, let me just amend my statement is that the plant is approved and ready to go. We have approval for the plans.
What portions are not yet approved?
Um. The plant's approved, that gives the intake structure, the transmission mains have moved through. It's just, I believe it's the final little nuances on the transmission main that we have, which doesn't impede anything associated with that.
Okay. That's all I have.
A little comment, a question from council?
Yeah, this is Councilman Little. In looking at the aerial shots of the project and the canal that's going to be the source for the potentially 10 million gallons per day, doesn't look very big. Is there any chance that this source could be unable to provide 10 million gallons of water a day? And if so, what's the alternative?
The canal size to deliver, I mean, they deliver a significant additional amount of water downstream of us than the Now, the the canal size to deliver, I mean, they deliver a significant additional amount of water downstream of us than than we will take the ten million gallons. So it supplies many times over what what our account is.
Okay, just from the pictures, it just doesn't look much bigger than a big ditch. Okay, I just.
I think that may have been at a low flow time.
Yeah, we get those in the middle of the summer around here. All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comment from council?
You still have those holding ponds over there, don't you? At that site?
So the the site was formerly a sand pit, and as we went through preliminary engineering, the suitability of that came into question. And so the plant right now is designed to to operate without a forbay. We're looking at the future options as far as what is the most cost effective way to either utilize that existing onsite pond or take another approach with the, you know, a future plant expansion for that.
Okay, some of the things that you're doing on the plant now will be able to get us to expand to twenty MGD at some point later on down, and we're making some improvements on there to be able to do that, right?
Yes, sir, there's, you know, part of the what will be built into this phase will allow us to basically drop in some additional equipment to expand the plant.
Okay.
Any other question from council?
Yeah, one more, Mayor, so the the water, the water source from America Canal, is that is it the Brazos River?
Yes, sir.
So do we have kind of safeguards in place with this treatment plant to kind of avoid some of the issues that have happened in in Southern Brea County recently?
I'm not familiar with.
The water, water contamination issue that hit.
Yeah, this plant will meet all the quality, you know, water quality requirements of TCQ and and that we have in all of our other locations.
Okay, so if if a similar issue comes up and contaminates the water that's feeding the Southern Brea County, we would still, we would be on the same order essentially.
Robert, you want to address that as far as how the plant deals with with that?
Sure, if there if there does happen to be a situation that we do need to shut the plant down, Councilman Perez, we have enough enough other source water to be able to service our customers without interruption.
Okay, so the we have a contingency plan where we can shut the the plant would be able to be isolated. We would be circulated water from City Houston temporarily.
We would also, we would also, yes, but we'd also be separated, bringing water from our Alice plant and our wells that are onsite as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
We never did get an upgrade, Robert, on our right now, we've got junior lien rights on on the water, we don't have senior lien rights or the water down through there.
Councilman Owens, that that's correct, all the water rights are actually held by GCWA. We have option water contracts or when we go firm, we'll have water contracts associated with that. So it's all held through GCWA with contracts. And Councilman Perez, to answer your question back also is that this is a membrane plant, not a sand filtration unit. So it's different technology that doesn't allow that size of molecule to get through.
Okay.
So and addressing the the reliability of the water, I believe that we do have through GCWA, these do, we do have some senior rights as well as being backed up by stored water, correct, Robert?
That's correct, it's all held by their their water rights and GCWA holds a majority of the water rights as it is.
So through them, we have the ten MGD and then it have storage in the in that system. So if the river does run dry, they're able to call for that to be released from some of the reservoirs within the Brazos River system. So that we will continue to have water in in the instance of the drought.
Correct, so they're.
The reservoirs have water.
Correct, backed by water from BRA and back for that senior water rights, they can make those calls where they'll trump all junior water rights till they get the claim on their senior water rights all the way back to the early thirties, they have water rights guaranteed till.
And most of those don't kick in until you do have an actual drought.
That that's correct, and what we're speaking of here is on this first ten MGD of water. Our additional twenty, our additional ten MGD, the water rights are a little bit different there right now, but we're working on those.
Yeah, well, Trent, you remember, we had a little bit of concern, I guess, when Robert was ahead of the, not not our Robert, but the Gulf Coast Water Authority, and we found out when he spoke to us that we didn't have these water rights that 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 we were supposed to have.
Well, yes, sir, and I think that was at a time where they, since then, they've gone back and evaluated the overall system as well as Brazos, BRA has evaluated their system and accounted for a lot of the, I guess, water rights that they maybe had previously, and they've now assured us that that, you know, we've got some of the senior water rights as well as stored water rights.
Good, good, appreciate it.
For this first ten MGD.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other comment from council? Madam Secretary, I believe we have a motion and a second on the floor.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Moore?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owen?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero to adopt resolution number R twenty twenty dash one eight one.
Okay. Moving to item number two on our U business agenda, Councilman Little, would you present this item for us?
Thank you, Mayor, consideration and possible action, resolution number R twenty twenty dash one eight three, so moved.
Motion with the second for the purpose of Secretary attacking that name for the agenda, with your name, more on the second. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Eric. With motion second on the floor, we're in discussion, staff report?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, so the next several items are related to the construction contract for the surface water plant. And so I'll just mention briefly the company, the amounts. This particular contract's amendment for Freeze Nichols to proceed with their project management. And the amount of this is a hundred and ninety two thousand dollar amendment to that contract, nothing to add.
Council, have any question or comment based on the staff report on this item?
Yes, sir, this is Woody again. Do we have, does Ron and him, Freeze Nichols, do they have any subs on this contract?
Councilman Owen, they they have had subs and yes, the and the answer is yes to that, they do have subs on the contract. They have Cobb Finley with them and that should answer that for you, sir.
We haven't seen anything on that. One other thing, going back through and looking at some of the delays, I guess what we've had, the plant really won't get underway until like twenty twenty five?
As I mentioned, the wastewater is estimated twenty twenty three, and we've already been out there with the awarded work for the early works project, so it's been underway.
Okay, because.
Delays of significance, the the schedule has always been to deliver water starting in twenty twenty three. And we're looking at the first quarter, end of the first quarter of twenty twenty three to deliver water. So significant delays, that's multiple seven, you know, five to seven years, it's, you know, we're we're going to hit that mark.
Yeah, but I'm looking at the operation maintenance cost and twenty twenty four, we had one point or one million actually in operation cost. And in twenty twenty five, we jumped up to three point three million in operation cost. So we take a two point three million increase over the next year from twenty four to twenty five. So I didn't know if that twenty five is if we're kind of full bore and putting in a delivery of water.
I believe that's looking at an implementation plan of operating the facility of potentially bringing on contracts to help operate it initially as we bring on staff and ramp up to be able to operate that plant fully ourselves. That we'd have to go deeper in those numbers, but that, you know, that also includes the the cost of the of the water. Once we move it to an actual contract for taking the water and how much water will be taken over the years.
Okay, and and I think Trent, you told me that y'all have hired, I guess, a superintendent that has experience in running freshwater plants?
Yes, sir, we have a surface water plant manager that's been on board with us for, I believe, over a year now, maybe a year and a half. And he's been instrumental in working with Robert's team and the designers on the design thus far. And he'll be leading the operational efforts.
Okay, one last thing. We're still showing young as the city secretary on this item here on number two. I don't know if that makes any difference or not, but he's still showing on there.
The resolution?
Contract, this was probably at that time, so.
Yeah. Yeah, it just it's calling for signature on their city secretary and 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 they get got his name there. That's only one of the others are all correct.
No, the page one ninety two, the amendment that shows, Crystal.
Good, good, I must have missed that one in.
I do.
Yes, Mayor, so in the original design contract, did we not have construction-based services included in that?
We did not.
Was there a reason why we excluded it then and or included as an amendment now procedurally?
You know, part of the early phases of developing the 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 plan through PER was determining what what exactly were the routes on lines, exactly what the plant technology would be and the configuration of the plant. So I think the Freeze Nichols one is probably a really good example, you know, there was intended to be the the full forbay initially. And and so going through that early phase of design and wind up what where we are at this point with what we're actually constructing. And then we can base the construction phase services on that as opposed to what we, you know, the more unknowns early when we did the first contracts.
And sure, the next two items as well.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments from council? There are none, Madam Secretary, I believe we have a motion and a second on the floor.
Member Little? Member Little?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Moore?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owen?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero to adopt resolution number R twenty twenty dash one eight three.
I thank the council and all of us have to remember that the our future of our city depends very strongly on the development of that surface water plant. Let's remember Hernandez, would you do item three?
Yes, sir, Mayor, consideration and possible action, resolution number R two zero two zero dash one eight four, so moved.
Second.
Ready, okay, good. We have motion second, we're in discussion, staff report?
So CDM Smith's another firm that we've had alongside us and done good work, been a partner through this extensive project. This particular item likewise is for construction phase services, bringing that on to the CDM contract for the one point nine million dollars as noted here, nothing to add.
Hmm, I was wondering if any comment based on staff report?
We have a list of the CDM's subs on there? Robert? Trent?
Councilman Owens, I can get, I'll get you that list and send it through Mr. Pearson in the morning. They have, they have, we have many subs working on all these projects.
Okay. Do we have anybody at this meeting tonight from CDM Smith?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay. On a, Robert, since you're on there, on a pushback of time, I think a lot of it's been taken care of, we talked about it previously, but the pushback is is with Texas Water Development Board, is this going to cost us anything in the future of pushing this back? I know, you know, we talked about what all happened to us in two thousand and seven and pushing these things back and actual pricing stuff went up. Did we see any of that coming into this or not?
No, sir, we've gotten very competitive pricing for this project. And and having the opportunity to continue to work with TWDB and TCQ, it's been a very good relationship and has not affected that bidding in that market, the market's been very good right now.
If I could clarify, Trent, can you say again the schedule and how this matches up with how it's if our budgeting and CIP, how we've been planning this?
Sure, so, you know, this has been in the plant in the works for many, many years. And of course, basically a five-year project from kicking off preliminary engineering through delivering water. And, you know, we're we're talking, the original schedule was deliver water January twenty twenty three, and we're talking, you know, March twenty twenty three, where we are right now. So, you know, two to three months over that period of time is very, very minor. And so it's it's not impacting the project or the overall project.
I believe, Madam Secretary, we have motion second on the floor.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Moore?
Aye.
Member Perez? Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owen?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero to adopt resolution number R twenty twenty dash one eight four.
Good. Moving in our agenda, item number four, Councilman Moore, tell us what we need to do here.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, resolution number R two zero two zero dash one eight two, so moved.
Second Hernandez.
We have a motion and a second, we're in discussion, staff report?
So, Mayor and Council, this piece is for the high pump phases. We broke out this work into different packages and Stan Tech was the engineers on this. And this again moves into the construction phase and amends their contract to carry through for that. So for eight hundred and forty thousand dollars to Stan Tech, nothing to add.
Yeah, the question comment from council on this item?
Mayor, this is Woody, on page nine of thirty six on the next steps, what is the total amount that we borrowed from the Texas Water Development Board?
I think we covered that, it's on that table where it has all those, all those water sewer revenue bonds, I believe we said are TWDBs, the impact fees would not, debt would not be in that category. So it's on the order of magnitude, you've authorized like a hundred and fifty eight million is what Trent mentioned previously.
Okay, so this really, it's a number you gave me, the hundred and fifty eight million, this is not what the total cost of the water plant is going to be, right? Okay, so this really, it's a number you gave me in a hundred and fifty-eight million, this is not what the total cost of the water plant's gonna be, right?
No, we we said in that table, if somebody could pull up uh like one seventy-six to five forty-nine, the project uh cost, the project source of revenue were a hundred and seventy-eight million. The uh expenditures, hundred and sixty-seven, we got contingency of eleven million, so we spent forty-four million today.
A hundred and seventy really for a ten million gallon bay plant and then doing some things to take it to twenty, that's um. That's pretty good price, I would think, you know, a- as it goes on there, uh I think if that's what we, and and we got that at lower, a real low rate of interest, right?
T W D B, you've authorized at uh zero for the first five or six years and then uh very low after that.
Okay. Um, do we have anything on the subs for Stan Tech?
I think.
Councilman, Councilman Owen, uh like I said, we'll provide that list, but however, if I recall correctly, with Stan Text, they did all their work in-house and did not have any subs.
So they're not having any subs at all?
Uh that is, if my recollection is correct, that is correct.
Okay, maybe, maybe King might be able to to give you something on that and and see, I appreciate it.
Any other comment or question from council? Madam Secretary, put you to work here, my motion second on the floor.
Member Moore.
Aye.
Member Perez. Member Owen.
Aye.
Member Orlando.
Aye.
Member Carbone.
Aye.
Member Little.
Aye.
Member Hernandez.
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero to approve resolution number R twenty twenty dash one eight two.
I spoke to item number five and I forgot to say Perez here tonight, so I'm putting to work.
Thank you, Mayor, at consideration of possible action resolution number R two thousand twenty dash one eight six, I'm moved.
Second, more.
Okay, we have motion second on the floor, Eric, staff report.
So this is the last of this set, uh this is for amendment to uh a contract through our Dura, their owner's rep. Uh so they uh, as it says, there are our agent on the project and uh coordinating all the work. It's not only the plants, but also the uh the pumps and the uh uh service uh large transmission mains that come from that. Those are all part of this, uh you have to build the plant and you have to get the water from that into the system. And so uh all of that work is being done by our Dura uh for the project coordination as our owner's rep. And uh this task five accomplishes that for just over uh three point one million dollars, nothing to answer.
Counselor, any question or comment?
Does this come up?
Summarize what the owner's rep is gonna do on top of the um the engineers that are gonna be doing construction management.
I'm sorry, there was some cross talk, can you repeat that?
Yeah, can you summarize, I think for the benefit of everybody watching, what the owner's rep is going to do on top of what the uh construction manager is gonna do?
Sure, sure, I can detect that, so the the owner's rep, um that they not only uh coordinate all the different engineering efforts. They've been lead on working through T W D B as well as permitting requirements through T C Q um and and then coordinating all the sets of plans uh to make sure everything uh works well together. In addition to that portion of the scope, they will also provide uh the construction management and inspection on the project uh within this contract. So they'll have, you know, full-time construction management as well as uh full-time inspection, all the specialty inspectors uh for mechanical, electrical, um the uh this data system and all those types of things. Um in addition to, you know, our own inspectors that we'll have doing the normal stuff that they're able to do, such as the water lines uh and some of that novel infrastructure. But they'll provide all the expertise uh from the construction management and inspection standpoint um that we do not have and don't have the capacity for either.
The organizational structure, and I I hate to ask a ton of questions, but uh recent experience with some owner owners are not necessarily the one that we have. Um I feel like the projects have been wasting money that where the um the the owners rep really aren't doing anything, they're just kind of stepping aside and letting the city make decisions on a um on anything that's even moderately controversial. Um, not to say that that's the case in this uh in this instance, but what assurance do we have that they're actually going to be providing us this service? Who who are they gonna report to directly, who's gonna provide the patents about where they uh where their responsibility ends and our staff begins? I just want to make for the three point one million dollars over a uh three-year span, I want to make sure that we're getting some actual representation opposed to uh somebody who's just gonna be available on call.
So no, they they've been involved day to day on this project from the very beginning and will continue to be throughout this. Uh they report up to us through uh Skipper Jones as well as Robert um and of course Skippers and Roberts group. And um, you know, they they do represent us on this on a day-to-day basis, they provide the expertise that we do not have to help us uh through the decision-making processes and managing all of the different uh engineering firms and all the different disciplines as well as the uh C Mar. Um, you know, they they really have been key and critical uh throughout the project to this point, will be key and critical uh to the end of it. Will you can be sure that, you know, our staff is gonna uh lean on them and and make sure that they do fulfill their scope of work and 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 the uh amount of funds that they are paid to provide those services as well.
Uh fair enough, so the uh the chain of command will be Robert to Skipper and then Skipper will sit on top of uh Jeffrey Peters, uh and he'll take his uh his direction directly from Skipper?
Yes, sir.
Correct.
Okay, and I don't mean to be cynical, uh I trust you guys, but there's, I've had experience with this type of contract and again in the very recent past and I've not found value with other providers, so I just want to make sure we're getting value for.
Absolutely.
All right.
Any other counsel reports or comments?
I I got something that I I want to discuss real quickly, uh Mayor, and uh I guess with the Dura, I see their contract takes them through the construction phase. Anything to do for the additional one-year warranty is additional funds on there. And I noticed in several of the contracts, it's pretty explicit on on the the uh contract on time and material of what they're doing. I mean, you know, it it says, you know, this is for five meetings, uh five two-hour meetings, or this is for, you know, different things like that. And then additional funds will have to come in at that point. Um, so, you know, going back and and I went through each one of the contracts that we're we're discussing tonight, and it really didn't sound like we tied them down to anything. You know, timing and materials is one thing uh as versus to lump sum, but the thing about it, um, you know, on some of them, it said like meetings, we'll go to five meetings in the two hours, two hour per meeting. Anything else comes out into additional funds. And then that kind of, you know, bothers me if somebody's saying, hey, I I'm gonna go five meetings, but I'm not gonna stay over two hours to each one of them. And we're doling out, you know, three million dollars or eight hundred thousand dollars and what have you. But but I'm sure with the Dura that that on that three point one million, uh and it states it's just through the construction phase services. And I'm sure we're gonna have to have somebody to stay with us into the the warranty aspect of, you know, maybe a year warranty or whatever it is.
I believe we have written in here that this does include uh engineering support for the twelve-month warranty period.
I didn't see it in in uh in this one, it just says for construction phase services.
And and.
But I mean, that's something for you to look at, see if it is, it's.
Sure, it's it's in our write-up that it's included, so I'm I'm, you know, that's should be based on the scope that's attached.
Yeah.
Councilman Owens, it is included um in their contract under project completion and closeout um through that, so they can work on warranty items as well. Uh so it's in that, it's in their contract.
Okay, but I, Robert, I didn't see it in there for that, I'd saw the construction phase services and I know that we're gonna have some, you know, we got so many different people working on this thing and, you know, really need to have somebody during the warranty phase for, so, okay, appreciate it.
It's item three point four, twelve-month contractor warranty support.
Okay.
Any further comment by council? Madam Secretary, I do believe we have motion second on the floor.
Member Perez. Member Perez.
Aye.
Member Owen.
Aye.
Member Orlando.
Aye.
Member Carbone.
Aye.
Member Little.
Aye.
Member Hernandez.
Aye.
Member Moore.
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero to adopt resolution number R twenty twenty dash one eight six.
I spoke to item six, so we put Woody Owens to work here.
This is item six? Okay, consideration possible action resolution number R twenty twenty dash one ninety-one, I so moved. Second, more.
We have a motion and a second, we're in discussion, staff report.
So uh nothing to do with the water plant, but this is a uh recommendation for one of the items that we'd identified through uh the Federal Cares Act that came in in through the summer. Uh not something that we typically deal and work with, so uh we had to get spun up on uh first the different options that were eligible and then the specifics. And uh this is one of those items that we're gonna be able to deliver and offer up, um council approved the uh uh the 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 budget and we've been talking about the funding allocations. This particular ones for business relief to uh uh provide some backstop for firms in in Pearland uh that meet the criteria that have had COVID-related expenses and impact. Uh we'll be contracted with the lift fund to administer uh this, we're glad to be able to provide uh eight hundred thousand dollars into this. As we go forward, uh you know, we'll be able to uh adjust the budget somewhat, come back to you and and uh once we're into this and see what the demand's like. Um, one uh good aspect is uh P D C stepped up and uh they're paying for the administrative contract side of this. And so we're able to use the uh uh Cares Act money uh more for the actual uh disbursements to the Pearland businesses. So uh that's why this eight hundred thousand dollars is uh whole for that without the administrative fee. So uh recommend your consideration, looking forward to getting after this, we've uh uh we'll get off and run and advertise this and let firms know so that lift fund can evaluate those and and uh make the allocations uh out there. We have to spend all these monies by uh December thirtieth of twenty twenty, all the Cares Act money, nothing to answer.
Any other question or comment based on staff report, it's a good project.
Mayor, just just a couple, so the, an attachment B, it kind of outlines what the, how the grant's gonna gonna work. Is that uh something that the city had had uh input on or is that pushed down from?
Uh my sense was it was a combination, I mean, the the these folks do this for a living and so they've got a good book of experience, not just, you know, in a COVID kind of situation, but but they have, as I understand, worked with that. Uh but then we also provided input, so I think it was collaborative, but if uh Joel or Matt, you wanna elaborate or correct me on that, feel free. Matt, Joel?
Maybe you just got spot on.
They must, yeah, they must agree with me, so.
Yeah, I I guess he, um, I mean, there's just a couple of requirements in there, saying a franchise business qualifies. If the owner only owns one location, I guess I don't, I don't quite understand the reasoning behind that. And then also there's a ninety-day business action plan that's required. Um, so I guess I'm just trying to to weigh out if uh we're we're talking a minimum a thousand up to a max of fifteen thousand. Just trying to to figure out um why these qualifications. And then I I I did find it interesting that if I'm reading this correctly, we're opening it up for fifteen days, we're taking application and applications for fifteen days and then that's it. Is that?
So, yeah, so uh my understanding being around this, uh the criteria, uh you know, we're trying about a balancing act of firms that are um, you know, have a presence in Pearland uh based here. I think that's where some of the franchise uh suggestions we're getting at, uh that if you had uh, you know, that, you know, franchises, you know, they they have that investment themselves. But um, you know, I guess it would get complicated too of, you know, subsidizing other pieces of the operation if it uh if there was multiples and and other locations outside. Uh and the ninety-day business plan, I don't think that's uh has to be real elaborate, but it's uh to give a sense of the ongoing concern and uh, you know, that the business has a has a plan. And we're, you know, providing funds for entities that uh are are adapting and and working their way out and lift has experience in evaluating those and reviewing something like that. And uh the the timing was just to keep it moving and uh, you know, see what we get with the first round and, you know, then keep going until afterwards, but trying to have tranches of of waves of that and seeing where we go. So it's manageable on that.
Well, that's great.
I'm sorry?
I think Joel Hart is ready.
We were muted, uh I apologize, Mayor Council, uh but I think Clay uh explained uh most of those uh concerns adequately. Um I think one of our, you know, um primary objectives was to make sure we're meeting the most vulnerable unmet need. And also making sure that uh we're targeting businesses that we won't uh provide grant funding for, and then next week they go out of business. We'd like to create some type of sustainability in that regard, so the business plan just kind of secures some sense that they have a a map for for remaining in business and moving forward uh in support of our our investments.
Mayor, if I may uh ask a question that's related to, which the member Carbone brought forward, on the eligibility for the franchisees. Um oftentimes franchises are um, I guess, i- there there are an individual entity for each franchise or if there's a partnership involved. Um was that taken into consideration, because I see the language just says, as long as the owner, are we talking about the entity owner or an individual owner? That parsed out or?
We're talking about the individual owner and we want to make sure that the business is located in Pearland and, you know, functions as a part of our local economy.
Okay, because I could see where that could potentially get uh confusing, but all right, I appreciate the clarification.
And i- in the the qualifications, I don't see where we're taking into account any uh paycheck protection program loan or uh E I D L uh loan, so. I I don't know, I could see a, I could see a scenario where where a small business that's already gotten uh six or seven figures and um in funding from from the federal side. Can can grab another fifteen K here locally, yet some smaller mom and pops may not be able to get it get it done.
So we have Richard Gianni from Lift Fund on the line, so Richard, you want you want to get into some of that detail if you can?
Yes, uh thank you, uh it's a very good question, so remember one thing, we're also focusing, one of the criterias is revenue. So this will inherently go out to the smaller business automatically, the maximum revenue is about two million a year, so it's two million and under. Uh and so for those businesses who did receive PPP funding and or idle funding, those were for very specific uses. Idle would have been a little bit more broader use, but PPP was a little bit more specific. We're now into September, at the end of September, so these businesses are gonna be applying and that's why we're taking a look at their ninety-day plans and we'll sit down and walk through that. We're gonna be trying to identify what their continuing gaps uh between their revenue and expenses are to determine what amount of this grant they would qualify for up to fifteen thousand.
And and I mean, it sounds like y'all, the, I guess Lift Fund is is gonna be fairly hands-on with these applications?
That is true.
Okay, all right, I'm I'm glad to hear that, because when you're dealing with a PPP or idle, it's, you hit submit, cross your fingers and hope it goes through.
There's gonna be a little bit more personal touch to this, uh we, yes, um absolutely.
And I guess I would say, um, you know, if if we open it up for those fifteen days and um you see a need or a a. and you see a need or a reason to adjust these qualifications, speaking for myself, and I think for other councilmen, we'd be willing to adjust these qualifications if, if, if the, the need is there.
Thank you for that, we'll be working closely with Joel, and so as we, as we roll this out, as we see rationale for some adjustments, we'll be working with Joel and working with the city. The fifteen days, by the way, to just address that a little bit further, was to be sure that everybody had the same amount of time to apply for this, because it's not going to be a first come, first serve. We've had very, very good experience with that process, a lot of business owners feel that that's a much more fair way to apply this.
Makes sense, thank you.
You know, it seemed like going through and looking at this, there's quite a few steps that, that company or individual goes through in order to secure any of these funds. And you know, going back and, and looking at it, and, you know, they have to maintain records for five years from what it says in there, and insurance and things of that nature, so it's not, you know, I, I think, you know, to get into this, somebody really needs to know and understand what they're doing in order to get into it to hopefully get some money, and make sure, you know, whatever they get is enough to keep their business going and pay for it. Just seems like a lot of steps in here and things of that nature to get those funds.
So, Mr. Owen, referring to the contract with Lift, there are some federal requirements that need to flow down?
Yeah, Joel, that's what it is, and a lot of information in there, and then retaining funds for five years and and what have you, and I don't know if we have to retain them or through this program or the individual, because somebody retains them, whatever.
Yes, sir, we actually do, and we ensure those requirements flow down to the next tier, but for the grant recipients, meaning the businesses, they may not have to adhere to all those requirements.
Yes, Lift Fund, we will be maintaining those records in terms of documentation that we obtained, et cetera, what justifies the release of those grant dollars to each individual applicant, so we will have those records.
Any other question or comment?
Yeah, just a, just a quick one, Mayor, I just wanted to say, you know, when you set the parameters for any kind of program like this, there's going to be some cutoffs that seem a little arbitrary, or, or some, you know, some outcomes that don't seem to make sense, but just reviewing this, I, I think it's really thoughtfully put together on how to maximize the amount of dollars that are flowing to businesses that are actually struggling, that actually can use them to make the difference between whether or not they are able to continue business and whether they're of the greatest need, so I, I just wanted to say thank you for the, the time that went into that and would agree with member Carbone that if, if there are adjustments needed to keep in alignment with those principles, I would be, I would certainly be willing to allow that discretion, thanks.
Any other comment for council at this point? I think that's a good program, Joel, thank you for doing that. Madam Secretary, I believe we may have a second one for her.
Member Owen?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Moore?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero to adopt resolution number R twenty twenty dash one nine one.
Okay, and member Carbone, try it number seven.
Thank you, Mayor, consideration and possible action resolution R twenty twenty dash one nine three, so moved.
Second, Hernandez.
I have motion second on floor, we're in discussion, staff report?
So, we have two items, I guess, part of the Cares Act, you know, and trying to make sure that these funds get distributed throughout the community by the deadline, it's coming up here very quickly. One of the allowable options is for the city to effect act as a grantor to public school districts, and so there's two districts that have multiple facilities within the city, obviously Pearland ISD and Alvin ISD, and so in talking with them, we've developed, we, we've talked to them about their gaps and their needs, trying to help them maximize their funding for educational purchase purposes, technology, remote learning, et cetera, but they will be going back to school, and they are now. And one of the things that we've identified that's eligible is to help them with in the scheme of their operations, but it'll be helpful, relatively small amount for each of them, to go and retrofit facilities, much as what we're looking at with our city facilities, and so we have two sub-reception agreements, the first one that just got called is for Pearland ISD, and then the second one, as I mentioned, is to Alvin ISD for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars each to provide those facility improvements that'll try to limit exposure, spread of the virus, et cetera, when as soon as they're able, so, nothing to add on this, either one of these, Mayor.
Any other comment from council on this item?
Mayor, I do have a question, this is Hernandez. There seems to be a, a difference, I think, in the, the footprint of these two ISDs. Was there any thought to having this be a little more weighted, I guess, instead of being an even distribution, or was that possible? What are the parameters that were used for this?
No, I think, you know, you talk about footprint, I mean, there's Pearland ISD has areas that aren't in the city limits, obviously Alvin's got bigger ones, so rather than for this amount of money trying to percentage it, it's, you know, this is, I think, pretty straightforward and equitable.
Okay, I, I guess the only thing that popped in my mind was maybe, I guess, there's a difference where Alvin ISD might have more with the public safety reimbursement sides, we have the agreement to provide the, you know, Pearland Police Department for Pearland ISD, so I just, that's the only clarification I wanted, so I, I appreciate it. It seems like this would be the easiest way, but didn't know if it's a consideration of course, thank you.
Question, comments? Good project, Joel, I think I like it. Madam Secretary, I believe we have motion second on floor, let's.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Moore?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owen?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero to adopt resolution number R twenty twenty dash one nine three.
As member Little on item number eight, I think Joel Hardison's got another project for us.
Thank you, Mayor, consideration and possible action resolution number R twenty twenty dash one nine two, so moved.
We have motion and a second, we're in discussion, staff report?
This is the pair to that with Alvin ISD with one just approved for Pearland ISD. Nothing to add.
There's another good project here. Any other comment from council with this one? Madam Secretary, we're putting you back to work, motion second on floor.
Before I start the, the call for the vote, was, was that House member Perez that seconded the motion?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, either him or I, I think we said at the same time, so.
Thank you. Member Little?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Moore?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owen?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero to adopt resolution number R twenty twenty dash one nine two.
Item number nine in our agenda, Hernandez, would you do the honor?
Yes, sir, Mayor, consideration and possible action, first and only reading of ordinance number one four nine seven dash eight, so moved.
Second, Perez. I was waiting for you.
I believe we got a motion and a second on four, not, not yet, we're working on it. We have motion and a second, and we're in staff report.
Thanks, sir, keeping with the school theme, this is an item for the school zone, speed zones, coming to you a little bit later, obviously, than usual, but just a necessary function of uncertainty with start times and schools, you know, them being very occupied, but we have met with Pearland ISD and Alvin ISD gone over the various school zones, providing the hours, and so this is a first and only reading, so we'll need a higher majority to pass this, one and only, but this already, I think we've actually probably started to sign some of these and get those up to provide that direction for motorists, try to keep things safe as possible in those areas, nothing to add.
Council, you have a motion on the second on the floor, if y'all have any comments, we'll make a staff report.
Clay, my understanding is we're only changing the times, we're not modifying any of the site locations or the the locations of any of the school zones?
Right, I think the discussions, it was the, the time specific, I don't think there's any need or net request for areas, geographic areas.
Okay, thank you.
Good motion, any other question or comment from council?
Mayor, this is Woody, I'd like to add one comment in there, it has nothing to do with the time zone, but I had asked previously on the Alexandra School down there that when we put that footbridge in, we striped it up to that area right there, but we didn't continue to put stripes on down through there, and there's been several calls from that school last year, and I went by there today to look at it, and it hadn't been striped and through there, and they've had some near miss accidents that are people turning in to the school area, so I just think, you know, along with this safety problem here and, and the speed limit and everything, I think, you know, that should be looked at in these different areas, and of course, I think the Alexandra School should be looked at, be able to do that, thank you.
Council, any other comments or questions on based on staff report, and the project, what it reads? Here, none, I don't hear anybody else, so Madam Secretary, I believe we have motion second on the floor.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Moore?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owen?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero to approve or adopt the first and only reading of ordinance number fourteen ninety-seven dash eight.
Good, moving to item ten, Councilman Moore?
Thank you, Mayor, consideration and possible action resolution number R two zero two zero dash one eight seven, so moved.
Second, Hernandez.
We have motion and a second, we're in discussion, staff reports?
Thanks, sir, this is reinvestment in existing neighborhoods, we identified streets utilities in the Linwood area for, as defined in the maps that you have in the packet, for reconstruction, and so these are areas that appeared in our rating system, and you can see these U-shaped areas, there's four of them, for the project bounds, design was completed and ready to recommend to PRV Services for actual construction on the amount of just under one point five million dollars, nothing to add.
Council, any other question or comment on this item?
Yes, sir, I do. Is, is Robbie on? In this meeting?
With the engineering firm, what's the question?
Is Robbie from Gia Test, I understand he's a principal on RV, PRV Services, and I wanted to know if he was on?
I, I believe we have a representative on from PRV Services, but I don't know who it is.
Okay, the reason I, I've got a concern on that, going back and look, and this was a company that was established in two thousand and fourteen. And if you go and look at the Dun &amp; Brad Street on it, it shows one employee, and, and the annual revenue is a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars on there, and that was on the Dun &amp; Brad Street, they're on there. And the only thing that they've had projects on was in Houston, and they, was a subcontract with someone else is the projects they had on, so the, the amount of this contract that we're looking at right now is ten times whatever their annual revenue is, and, and it kind of concerns me that we're doing it, and I know Robbie, I've known him years and years and consulted for him, I don't know this company. But the thing about it, when you got a company and it shows one employee on the Dun &amp; Brad Street, and you show annual revenue of a hundred and nineteen thousand, and you're going to give them a a contract for one point four million, which would be roughly about ten times what, what the, the annual revenue is, and I was wondering if Robbie's on there to?
So, Robert, talk to the vetting and the, the recommendation, please?
Yes, sir. Councilman, I understand where your, your comment, but however, we have required our engineering firm to go through and review and vet, they have worked with PRV Services in other contracts, PRV Services has been subs to SER contracting as well, and has worked here in Pearland before, so this gives that, them an opportunity. Again, also with the vetting, as always, they're required to put up their bond, and if they fail to communicate that, then, from that standpoint, then we, we would pull that and go from there, but however, they have qualified and shown that they've done the work, and been able to qualify and do that work.
Yeah, well, the only thing, Robert, on here, and through your own statements on there, they've never done work for the city of Pearland. They have with Metro Houston in that area, but they've only done work as, as a subconsultant, you know, with somebody, or subcontractor with somebody, and that, now it's just going to get that information from Robbie on there, and it, you know, it, it concerns me of a company you know, twenty fourteen, and it only shows one employee, and we're going to give them ten times what their annual contract is, or annual revenue is on their contract. But, you know, understandably so, if you go ahead and do it, you know, it's up to you to do it, but if there's problems, they don't come back to the table anymore. No matter what it is, they don't come back. But
Sure.
But that's, I, I just thought somebody, Robbie or somebody would be on the, you know, would be in there if they're going to get the contract ten times the amount of what they make in revenue on a yearly basis.
Is there somebody from PRV available? I don't, I don't need to name them by name, but do they have a representative online?
Councilman Carbone, I'm checking with Joshua, he has the master list of everyone we invited.
Okay.
Any other question or comment based on the staff report?
Mayor, we're trying to get, uh, member.
Okay.
Just a second, please.
Hang on.
Yeah. Yeah. Hey, Robert, what's up?
Councilman, Councilman Carbone, he's actually listening through the, through the website. I have him on my phone here at the office. He did not go through WebEx.
Can we send him an invite?
Yeah, I think with that, I'd, I'd be willing to postpone either till later in this meeting or push it to the next meeting unless staff has heartburn over that delay.
Yeah, maybe we just push to the end of the meeting. We got several others. So if you don't mind, that'd be great.
That would be my suggestion.
Does that be a table? Is that a big rush?
Hey, John, Lawrence, which, how should we push it to the back of the agenda?
Yes, I would recommend they should table it until the end of the meeting or let's see. I was looking for, sorry, I've got two different agendas open on it. I was going to say until after agenda item number thirteen to give us time to send that link out to him and then have him come back.
Thanks.
If we table this till the end of the agenda.
Second. Put on that.
Mayor, are we ready for a vote?
Yeah, we're, we're going to vote to table.
And if they, Lawrence, right, since it's not a postponed, it doesn't have to be to a predetermined time. The mayor can bring it back at any point if they do come on the line, so they don't have to wait.
Yes, sir. We were just given direction to, well, as it stands now at the end of the meeting. If we're able to have that, if the gentleman's able to come back on before then, and somebody wants to remove it from the table prior to item fourteen, they're welcome to make that motion at that time.
Cool. Thanks. All right.
Mayor Reed, I will go ahead and call for the vote if you are okay with that.
For now, we're just going to table it to the end of the meeting.
Yeah, we just need to vote to table.
Yes. Member Moore?
Aye.
Member Moore?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owen?
Is this to move it to the end of the meeting?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
The motion carries to table this item until the end of the meeting.
Anybody happy with that?
We're good, Mayor. We'll move on to the next agenda item.
That'll be good. We're going to move to item number eleven. Then we'll actually hear the previous one later. Item number eleven, Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action. Second and final reading of ordinance number fifteen ninety-five. So moved.
Second. More.
Fifteen ninety-five, uh huh. A motion second on the floor. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, this is the second and final reading of our budget for the fiscal year that starts on Thursday, October one. And you've heard this not only for the first reading, but the weeks and months prior to this. So we do have the materials all there. And if I'm not mistaken, does this include the pay plan that we need to get amended?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So just to be belts and suspenders, in reviewing the pay plan, there was a civil service action that hadn't been updated properly. And so we've corrected that and we'd ask that you note that by amendment from what you'd read on the first reading. And but otherwise, ask your consideration. I'm looking forward to moving this forward and get all these good things done and thank the council for all their attention through the budget process. Nothing to add.
The motion was I move to amend Exhibit B to match the corrected civil service pay plan. That needs to be somewhere in, in the following wording of this. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. We have staff report. It's a council having further comments at this point.
On this amended motion, does that allow not discussing this item? If you're just going to amend the motion?
We can discuss the item before the amendment.
Can discuss the item before the amendment?
Yes.
I've just got some questions on, if you can go to page three of thirty-eight. It'll show what a couple of things on there, Clay, and you probably can answer those. I'm sure you can. Expenses are up nine million dollars higher than last year. Shows on our reflects on that.
I gotta catch up to you. You referenced the, what, page nine?
No, I think it was page three of thirty-eight, Clay.
I had the whole packet open, so instead of the, okay, so three thirty, sue.
Yeah, it just shows expenses, nine million, twenty-five thousand, one twenty-eight higher than last year. And I was just going to get some kind of clarification on that.
I'm looking at page nine. Where's that sentence at?
Nine. I had written down on my note.
So, so that's the water sewer fund and that's, that includes your capital work and, and everything in the water sewer fund. So that's simply the capital program, AMI, probably some, probably not that, but the, the plants, the other things in debt service that have all been budgeted and balanced out.
Okay, and one other thing, you, you list some things on there of additional administrative assistant at fifty-four thousand and and then you put utility building, billing team. What is that, a hundred and ten thousand? And just maybe some clarifications on that. Who's getting the admin assistant? Maybe that's going to PW or whatever, but, but more so on the utility building, billing team of a hundred and ten thousand. And, you know, what are those positions? It, it doesn't really clarify that.
Right. So those are the ones you, we talked about during the process and, and that's for adding the two customer service reps, regardless of any other system improvements or tweaks. We need the additional bodies to manage the workload, the quantity that's going through or to keep up. And so you know, we believe these are priority items to keep the, the positive trend going for the service improvements and the growth in the system and the people and accounts that we have going forward. So these are the same two positions that we talked about when that was specifically brought up during the budget.
Clay, it also includes a third individual, which is a supervisor over that area, customer service supervisor. So it's a total of three positions, plus one ten.
Okay. Well, it just listed the, the billing team and I don't know what that consists of. I mean, I'm sure it's individual positions, but it just didn't say, it just, you know, captured it all as saying the billing team. So I was just wondering what, what those were. But, okay, well, you, you answered it.
We've got a plan here at this point.
Can you kind of summarize the change in Exhibit B? Looking over it, looks like it's just a couple of pennies difference here and there on the classifications for the civil servants.
Right. So the, as I was informed that the, the, the civil service pay plan didn't reflect the two percent on all those. So it just corrected the math on that to make that clear.
Okay. Then I offer an amendment to my motion. Do, I, I move that we amend Exhibit B to match the corrected civil service pay plan.
That's under item number eleven?
Yeah, I had number eleven.
Member Perez, can you please repeat your motion, please?
Yes. I move to amend this motion to amend Exhibit B to match the corrected civil service pay plan.
Were you asking what the motion was?
No, Mayor, I'm, I'm amending the motion for the recommendation of staff. So I just need a second and then we can vote on the amendment and vote on.
Second. Carbone.
Okay, we have a motion second. We're any other, any other changes to our response to, to the issue? I believe we have motion second on the floor. Does everybody understand what the motion second on the floor is? I'm seeing yes. Madam Secretary? I think we've got a motion second on the floor. You, you know what the motion is?
Yes, sir. This will be to amend the actual ordinance for Exhibit B. Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owen?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Moore?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero to amend Exhibit B to match the correct civil service pay plan.
Now we need to vote on the amended motion.
There we go.
That's correct. Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owen?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Perez? I'm sorry, Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Moore?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero to to adopt the second and final reading of ordinance fifteen ninety-five as amended.
Moving to item twelve, Councilmember Owens.
Yes, since we've already approved it on the first one, consideration possible action, second and final reading of ordinance number thirteen fifty-eight dash twenty. I still move. Second. More.
We do have motion second on the floor. Staff report.
Thanks, sir. As we discussed, these are eight different, some naming changes, some updates to the fee structure for a variety of fees that for services that the city charges. So otherwise, you've seen this on the first reading. Nothing to add.
I have a question or comment based on staff report. This is a good report. Madam Secretary, we have a second also over here.
Member Owen?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Moore?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero to adopt the second and final reading of ordinance number thirteen fifty-eight dash two zero.
Moving to item number, new business item number thirteen, Councilmember Alonso did a good job on the conservative agenda. Got you a good job here.
All right. Consideration and possible action, second and final reading of ordinance number fifteen ninety-six. So moved.
Second. More.
We have, we have a motion and a second on the floor for, we're in discussion. Staff report.
Thanks, sir. So the city apparently bought a quarter to a third of, of a total property tax bill. This particular ordinance would be the second reading to adopt our city rate for the upcoming year, lowering it to the seventy-two cents from the current that is below the, what they used to call the effective, now the no new revenue rate. And so we're, this will support all the operations of the city and the debt service, our obligations there. And so we need this to follow through on that. So nothing to answer.
Counsel, have any reporting on this item? Madam Secretary is going to look quiet. Motion second on the floor.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Moore?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owen?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero to adopt the second and final reading of ordinance number one five nine six.
Mayor Reed, we have a rep from PRV, if council wouldn't mind bringing that back on the table.
Okay. That's number, number ten?
Yes. Lawrence, swing it up.
We would have somebody, a council member moved to remove it from the table at this time.
Let's count some more that was going to put that on the table.
I, I move that we remove the previous item from being tabled and discuss it now.
So item number ten, you're going to re, bring it back to the table. Did you have a motion and a second? Is that correct?
Second, Carbone.
It's a second by Carbone. Okay. Then we do have a motion and second on the floor. Staff report.
Ms. Rupton, do we have the rep available? I'm sorry, I apologize, Kristen.
I would say we need to go ahead and take a, do the roll call vote to remove this item from the table.
There you go.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owen?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Moore?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero to remove this item from the table.
So Mayor and Council, you'd ask for questions for the recommended firm. And I believe, Robert, you've got them on the line.
Yes, Mr. Pearson, Mayor and Council, a gentleman by the name of Ramesh Paveleri. He is the leader for PRV Services. Just to let you all know, he has done quite a bit of work with the city of Houston in contracts that are a little bit more than the contract that he is being up for award tonight. But he is available if there's any further questions. And he does have the staff and is ready and willing and ready to get this work done.
Well, if we could ask the gentleman, can you, can you help us clear a concern by one of the other members about the amount of staff that you have? And a general idea of whether your annual revenue exceeds the value of this contract?
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Good evening. Please answer those questions. Ramesh, I can't hear you.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening. Can you hear us?
Yes, sir. How are you all doing, sir? My name is Ramesh Paveleri. I'm the. My name is Ramesh Paveleri, I'm the, I'm the principal of PRV Services. Yeah, good evening, sir. I appreciate for giving me an opportunity to bid this City of Pearland job, the Lindwood Street reconstruction project. Hello?
The question that council had was, you talk a little bit about staff besides your staff and also the work you've done that's similar to the contract we're discussing.
Josh, can we mute everyone except Mr. Paveleri?
Mr. Paveleri, if you still have your, the YouTube feed pulled up, if you can bring the volume down and ask if you want all of your feedback.
Hello, good evening, gentlemen, I guess we are hanging off in disturbance on the phone.
Mr. Paveleri, if you can, if you can mute the video stream that you have going.
Oh, you want me to mute?
Mute the video stream that you're watching the meeting on. So, don't mute your, your microphone, just. You have the video stream on through either YouTube or the city's website, if you can close that tab or mute that feed. Okay, try now. It appears he just dropped off of the call. Oh, here he comes, hang on just a second.
Hello?
Yes, Mr. Paveleri, can you hear us?
Good evening, gentlemen. Yes, sir, I'm sorry for all the interruption.
Yes, we can hear you now.
Yes, sir. Hello?
Yes, please go ahead.
We can hear you, the questions were asked about the firm size, your capacity to do the work, so can you address that?
Sure, yes, sir. I've been in business from 2014, I purchased the PRV Services from another friend of mine. And I've been doing a lot of work for the City of Houston and of Paris County and Harris County Field Control Districts. And this is my first Pearland job, but I've been dealing with the City of Pearland on, as a senior project manager, I was working under SCR Construction Partners. And for City of Pearland, I recently finished a job called Regency Park Drive and Kirby Drive. And on my own, I've been doing, I've been a subcontractor for SCR Construction for past four, five years, ranging from projects from 1.5 million plus. And I've been given an opportunity to, with the City of Pearland job, which is on my scope of line, which I do it on a regular basis. The paving and my underground is my nature of scope. And this is my first job being bidding as a prime contractor, and I look forward to work with you all. And I have all my resources, I have four crews, three paving crews and one underground crew. And I am capable of getting this project on board and with no issues, I can complete on time. And looking at my past completion jobs, which I worked with the City of Houston and other prime contractors, I had no issues till now, and I can provide you with all the references so that you all can make a call on that.
Okay, so the question, the question was the number of employees you have and your, your capacity to work. I think generally you, you addressed the capacity to work, but can you tell us how many employees you have?
Right now, I have 74 employees.
Okay, they're all, they all work for you?
Yeah, they all work for me, yes, sir.
Okay. All right, well, it sounds like you're big enough to manage this, you've got experience and staff vetted you, and so did our contractor, or so did our engineer, so.
Yes, sir, I'm very confident in getting this, yes, sir, and I look forward.
I'm ready to vote.
Yeah, I appreciate you answering the questions and Councilman Owens, I guess you can't believe everything you see on the internet.
It came up on his Facebook feed. Mayor, we're ready to vote.
We got him back on the table there, what, what?
Mayor, we're through with Mr. Paveleri, we're ready to vote.
Sir?
We're through with the, the engineer we were just speaking with, we're ready to vote on this item.
Item number 10.
Mayor, we do have a motion and a second on the floor.
We do have motion second on the floor?
Yes, sir.
What is the motion on the floor? I turned my head a while ago.
It's item number 10, Mayor.
Item number 10, approving resolution R 2020-187.
All right, good, we have motion second on the floor, staff report.
We're voting.
And.
Crystal, call the vote.
You feel like you've discussed enough to go up to?
Yes, sir, Mayor, we're ready to vote.
Okay. Madam Secretary, press on.
Member Moore? Member Moore?
Aye. Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owen? Member Owen?
Ready.
Josh, is Mr. Owen still on the line?
He's unmuted.
Member Owen?
Aye, go ahead.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero to adopt resolution number R 2020-187.
Okay. Moving in our agenda. Item number eight.
Mayor, we're on 14.
Sir?
We're on item 14.
You'll run eight, five, we need to run 14, sorry about that. Went to sleep on my job here. Councilman Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor, consideration possible action, resolution R 2020-177, so moved.
Perez.
Perez, seconded, Mayor.
Before. Staff report on this item.
Mayor, before they go on to staff report, I just want to let you know that I will be recusing myself from this item, this is member Hernandez, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Hernandez was excusing, okay. All right.
Staff report.
So, thank you, Mayor and Council, this is an item that we're presenting. Waste Management has a solid waste contract with us, and one of the contract provisions is that they can request a rate increase based upon their costs, so we are merely presenting their requests. There's no criteria specifically in the contract other than Waste Management to show their cost increase. Separately, there's been some adjustments for fuel, but that's dictated by the contract and those are being implemented. So the matter before the council is whether you want to approve their request for an increase coming up. You can approve that and they'll be implemented, or you could turn it down. And then Waste Management would have the option to terminate the contract in six months, but trust won't come to that regardless. And it's really up to Waste Management to make their case. And so Mayor, if you would allow, I suggest you turn it over to the representative from Waste Management, Shana, to represent their request and explain that to you. So Shana, are you online?
Yes, I am.
All right, so I'll, I'll give it to you since this is your item, really.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, thank you for adding this to the agenda tonight. As most of you know, we have a one-time opportunity to get a price adjustment per year. So this year, the CPI is actually at a negative 0.182%. So one of the discussions that we brought to staff earlier during the summer is based on the additional tonnage that we've seen from March, starting with COVID for the residential usage. Just to give you an idea, on tonnage for residential homes has gone up about 9% from last year. That's subtracting out the new homes as well. So we're seeing a 9% increase just in tonnage coming from each resident throughout Pearland. And then on yard waste and recycling, we, we've seen about 11% increase in both of those categories. So when that occurs, we also have additional hours and tonnage fees that are over and beyond what we typically see on a year-to-year basis. So instead of the negative 0.182% rollback in the residential price, we were looking for, you know, to offset some of our costs because we've had pretty much like a 9% increase overall in hours and tonnage and disposal costs. So that is the reason that I'm here tonight and basically here to answer any questions that you guys might have in regards to that. One of the things that you might ask is why the 3%? When we looked at the garbage and trash CPI index, it was a little bit over 3%. So we kind of gauged that, you know, this might be a fair ask in the 3% because garbage and trash index for the same time period as the CPI that we use for this contract was close to 3%.
Does that complete your report?
Yes, and I can answer any additional questions. And there's also supplements that we went back three years for the city proving our cost as well for the past three years. So please let me know if there's any questions that you might ask. One other thing is, the fuel is still a component, so right now there's a negative 2% fuel reduction in the cost. So the 1811 rate for the next quarter would actually be 1775 until December 31st of 2020.
If we see a reduction in the tonnage in the hours post-COVID, will the rates go back down?
Well, we only have one time a year that we usually do a, an adjustment. But I think this is one question that staff does as well, that, you know, we could definitely take a look at that maybe in six months. Basically, we're trying to account for, you know, the cost back from March to current, currently right now with the spend.
Council have any more questions for the?
Yeah, I do, thanks for, for joining us tonight to answer questions. My question is, is this being, is this a ask that's being made of every other municipality that Waste Management is servicing?
Great question, so we have looked at our individual contracts, and in some cities, we're asking for a one-time adjustment. So if you've noticed in, I believe it's page 547 of your packet, so we are giving each city the ask, and so Pearland's one-time ask, if we were going to just on a COVID-related, would have been 105,000. So in other cities, we are asking for those costs instead of an increase, incremental cost over the next year. So in other cities, we're asking for a one-time, plus maybe their CPI. In most of my cities also, it's based on the CPI for garbage and trash. So their index has been running about between 2 and 3%, depending on the month that we calculate the price increase.
Gotcha, and sorry if I missed this in the, the write-up, but what drives the decision as to whether, whether you're asking for a one-time lump sum versus a rate increase?
It was just a decision based on the price increase was coming up in October, and so it was a contract decision, nothing, nothing more.
Gotcha, makes sense, yeah, I asked just because I'm seeing a study here from the Solid Waste Association of North America, and it's saying because of COVID, you know, and people sitting at home and, and, you know, deciding to clean out their garages and whatever, the average US city saw a 20% increase in municipal solid waste and recycling collection as a result of COVID, and so I guess I just wanted to know the, the equity behind that because it would seem Pearland is actually doing better than a lot of other places in terms of not generating as much additional trash as the average.
Yep, we've seen it, you know, in different cities, it's different. So we've pulled out the numbers for each city so that it's fair and reputable and not saying, okay, just across the board, we're going to do X amount percent. So it's based just on each city's tonnage and hours that picked up for that particular city.
Gotcha, and then my last question, maybe this is for staff. Could you please advise how the timing of this corresponds with the ongoing waste man, the waste services contract that we have pending? And when these rates, when the new rates that are determined through that exercise are going to take effect or are expected to take effect?
Right, so the existing contract, the Waste Management goes through next fall, and so we are working towards being positioned to have that considered, and there's, as you can imagine, considerable run-up time to prepare both on the, well, on the contractor's part for that work, so you could expect this to be going into place, the new contract on or about October this, next year, with whatever rates are negotiated or a part of that new contract. So this to be effective through this existing contract through end of September 21.
Thank you.
If I may, Council, this is Lawrence over in the legal department. Just wanted to say in regards to member Little's question earlier, whether this was in relation to COVID-19 and if costs go down or the tonnage or the labor goes down, whether or not we would have a corresponding decrease. While Waste Management said that within six months, that's something that they would consider if we had such a request, just wanted to let you know that the contract doesn't specifically allow for that. Whereas this potential increase that they're asking is within their contract rights under section 903 of the contract. I didn't see a corresponding section for the city's rights to request an offset or a decreased, a one-time decrease after an event that caused something out of Waste Management's control to have it come up, let's say go back down, so. You know, we could ask Waste Management for that in six months, they might be really kind and they might allow it, even though the contract doesn't allow it. Or they could say, there's nothing in the contract that makes us do that, you're going to pay this rate until the end of the contract term.
So, so I have a question. So this is all to offset the, this is all to offset the increase in COVID and some of new building that we've acquired since the last contract update. Wouldn't it? Wouldn't it, I guess, I find it hard to to understand the 3% increase opposed to like a one-time fee to provide for all of the increase during the COVID time period. And, you know, I know everybody's not back to work yet, but it seems like when I go to work every morning, the traffic is getting a lot heavier every morning. So there's more people going back to work. And I would think that we're going to see a a reduction in the numbers of solid waste being generated per household as as what was during the March, April, May, June time periods. So I'm just wondering, you know, I guess, I just find it hard to believe that we're doing a 3% increase opposed to a one-time, a one-time payment to make up for that with maybe a small increase to I guess catch up for some of the new residential units that we have.
For the new residential units, those were taken out. So, I mean, those homes we account for every month on a house count adjustment. So those are not even calculated. We've taken those into consideration and taken the percentage out. So the 9% that we're talking about just on tonnage is just on an average from last year to this year, looking at it. Again, the 3% was looking at a garbage and trash index that we use in this industry just to compare for price increases. So the index that we're using in your contract is the, the local index, so doesn't really account for a true solid waste, garbage and trash index. What we see happening in our industry standard, if that makes sense. So that's why we were trying to give you more of a realistic CPI adjustment besides just saying, hey, we're looking for this amount of a one-time fee. So, you know, it's flexible if council's not agreeable to the increase. I think we can negotiate something else. I appreciate that into consideration. We were just trying to come up with an increase that we could see as a table index, like the garbage and trash.
Hey, Shana, this is Wardy. What will be the monthly charge for residents?
So right now with the 2% decrease, the monthly charge would be 1775 plus the dollar admin fee.
Okay, so I'm looking at my bill right now and I'm paying 1992. And then for August, I paid 2011. But one other question being, so I would be paying less during that period of time. Sales tax on garbage. What is that? Anybody got an answer? I get paid a dollar 52 and a dollar 53 on sales tax on garbage. And I don't know what that is. I don't pay the bill, so I don't know what it is, but I just saw it on there and I thought, well, what am I selling you? Am I buying the garbage from you or whatever? Pay sales tax or something? I don't know.
It's, I presume it's the sales tax and on other services that are taxable.
Yeah, because it's under sanitary services and the description is sale tax on garbage, a dollar and 52 cents a month. Well, between a dollar 52 and a dollar 53 a month.
I mean, it's a taxable service. Eight and a quarter is our tax rate.
What was that, Tony?
It's a taxable service.
It is?
Yeah.
I thought you had to buy something in order to be taxable.
Nope, it can be a taxable service as well.
Oh, okay.
Like maids and surveyors and all the other people that provide services.
I thought I was buying garbage, so getting rid of it, I don't know.
Well, you may be buying garbage, you're just not.
If I could, I don't want to comp things more, but, you know, the 3% was mentioned a couple of times.
Hey, Nadine, you still on?
Yeah. Joshua, can you mute, please? So the 3% was mentioned, but if you look at the bottom of the AR page, that second page of the AR, you know, there's different components, the CPI, the fuel. We corrected the fuel surcharge CPI. And, you know, that bottom of that, that section 9.03, that's what they're asking for. It's, you know, technically, you know, our figuring is, it's a 5.3% from the 720 to the 1811. You know, it's on the base, so really can't count the, you know, from the prior charges once you roll it back.
You talk about people picking up your garbage. Every time I go out on Mondays and Thursdays, there's garbage out there. And when Laura came in, you know, it was a couple of days of heavy rain. Beta, it was same way. We had a couple of days of heavy rain. And Waste Management was out there picking up in that heavy rain period. So you're getting good, good service from a contractor. And I'm not sure whether we're arguing on something that's, I don't, I think they're asking for a relatively short-term adjustment out of full-term council negotiation. So I think you need to look at the quality of service you're getting during a period of quite a bit of strain upon everybody, including Waste Management. So I think we need to look at this pretty carefully on the basis of let's see if we can work out something where they get rewarded for the duty they did.
Mayor, I'll just dovetail on that. I mean, I think it's inarguable that they're providing more service than they probably anticipated the last time this rate increase, this yearly rate increase was reviewed, probably obviously unpredictable because of the nature of why people are at home more. And it's inarguable that they have the right for the contract to request an adjustment. So at this point, it's just a matter of whether we, whether or not we believe their calculation. I don't really have a reason to to be cynical of what they're providing. Again, you know, if they, if they feel like this is the necessary adjustment, I can't, I can't argue that they are actually working more than they were. I know in my house, we're putting out more garbage than we did before. Yeah, quite a lot more. So I think based on that, I'm willing to support it. My one question, Shana, if you're still on. Are you there?
Yes, I am.
When you, when you state in the write-up that you're going to give us the better part of $45,000 in credit, how is that credit going to be? How is that going to be given to the city of Pearland?
So on the September invoice, that for the residential billing, there is a line item for the credit that's already showing up that's been put in the system. So those numbers have been given out per month. And they're given to staff as well so that they can issue a credit for the residents as well.
So essentially, you're just going to take that, divide it by the number of accounts that you have, and that's the credit that each, each residential account holder is going to get, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I think, you know, I have no reason to, to disbelieve their number. I don't have any expertise in this per se to say that I don't, there's a reason to not believe the number. I think Waste Management has always been a good partner. So I would be comfortable moving forward with this.
So I guess a quick question. On that CPI index that's defined, that was defined in our contract or how? How did we, how did we come to that specific index?
Correct. It was defined in the contract that we currently have with you guys.
Okay. So it sounds like it would have been more beneficial for y'all to have the garbage and trash CPI.
Absolutely.
But, but we're not. And I guess that's where I struggle. And maybe you could help me more. On page 547 of the agenda, it kind of goes through that, that business unit cost calculation. I guess bottom line, you're looking at an average monthly cost. You're comparing what, 364K in 2019 to 399 in 2020?
So it's actually a comparison of the months of March through May of 2019 compared to March through May of 2020. So we try, because with garbage, we know it's seasonal. So we don't want to compare March to say any other month of last year because we know that springtime and we're going to have the normal green waste that's going to be more in certain months. So we tried to compare the same months over those periods. So on 547, it just shows those months of comparison. And then staff requested more detail. I believe it's on 548. And so we provided up until the month of June. So we gave further and then a three-year comparison going back as well.
Okay, so, so that bottom line that when you add, when you you look at those two periods and divided by the three months, you're comparing what, almost 400K to 365?
Correct.
And that's the average monthly cost for the, the service?
For the additional hours and then tonnage cost, correct.
So that, that delta of 35K is, is due to the additional hours in service?
The additional hours and then the additional tonnage, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I just, I struggle because you're, you're asking us to increase the garbage rates for our citizens. And just kind of back the envelope, when you look at what we, what we pay Waste Management, even net of franchise fees and everything, it's north of 500K a month. So, you know, I get you're not going to hit your, quite the margins you want or need to because of COVID, but there's a lot of businesses that are shutting down. And I mean, I respect that you can ask to come back and try to get the increase, but I just, I struggle going to somebody that just got laid off or their business is fixing to shut down because of COVID and saying, ah, we've got to increase your residential garbage rates because Waste Management didn't quite hit in the margin they need to. And, and quite honestly, I scratched my head in terms of the timing, timing of this with, with the new RFP. And this is all coming up again. It, it sounds eerily suspicious to the last time your contract came up for renewal. And so, I mean, for all that, I'm inclined to, let's stick with the contract, the CPI that we all agreed to. I guess now, what, 30 years ago? And, I mean, that, that's how I'm inclined and, and I don't want that to be a mark on, on the service. The service has been absolutely phenomenal. And that's why, that, I think that's why you'll, you'll earn, earn the seat at the table and, and potentially win the bid. But coming back right now, we're less than 12 months out of a contract change, just doesn't quite seem right. And, and I can't do that to the citizens.
Mike, when, when do we go out for the RFP for the, for the Waste Management or the Waste Collection contracts?
Right, so we've, we've shared that, that is out there. We've going to be doing some interviews and we'll be coming to you in October with some choices that'll help us to move forward in that. But, you know, that's, that's in process, well in the process, but that takes, as you can imagine, a lot of time.
Roughly speaking, when do we think we would be awarding and, awarding a contract to the next provider?
So we'll come back to you in October with some parameters and decisions. We'll be in a better position. But, you know, it'll take, Trent, what do you think, till February, till we can award, January?
No, I think the expectation is that we turn that around fairly quickly because there, there's not a whole lot of negotiating to do. The, the contract that we're planning to award under was provided to the providers as part of the RFP. And if they had exceptions to that, they noted those in the RFP. So the expectation is once we have direction from council on the type of service, whether we can stick with our current service or we move to cart service and how many times a week with cart service, then we can finalize that contract very quickly.
So is that December, January?
November.
November, okay.
So we would be looking at this rate increase being effective for somewhere in the range of about four months before?
No, 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 no. Contract October, as I mentioned before.
Okay.
This will go through October next year and the new contract will start October of next year.
Okay.
So from what was told to me just a while ago, that my service will be less if we approve it than what it is now. My cost.
Well, you got to look at the, as we explained in there, there's the fuel surcharge, the CPI. So you got to go off of the base rate. That's what they're entitled to. And they're asking for a 5% increase off that base rate.
Yeah, but when I
Those are separate factors.
What my new rate would be, it's, it's, it's lower than what I'm paying right now.
Well, that, that's going to happen regardless because of the, the contract for the CPI reduction and the fuel surcharge.
Yeah, well, it seems like, you know, from what it is now, that I'll be paying less. And I'm sure other people that paid the same thing I do for residential. So I would be paying less than what I am paying right now. So it's not much, but it's a positive. I don't know.
You're going to pay less, we're all going to pay less. We're all going to pay less. Period. That, that's, that has nothing to do with tonight. Tonight is do we want to let them increase the rate?
The base rate, just to be clear.
Base rate.
Yes, sir.
Well, the base rate, from what I told, and Shana's still on there when I asked a while ago, what is my, what is my rate going to be? And it was going to be less than what I'm paying a month now. So I don't know. But, but that's what I get there. I don't, we're paying less if we approve it.
Question of whether you approve it, it's going to go down. It's, it's going to go down from the, the other factors regardless. And then from that base rate, are you going to let them, allow them to increase off of that?
The mechanisms in the contract with the fuel adjustments to the base rate as well as the CPI adjustments to the base rate, you know, should result in where we have a, a base rate of $17.20 starting in October.
That's better than $19 now.
Well, their request is to move that to $18.11.
No, nobody's getting 19, a matter of what?
That's still less than 19.
I think there's some confusion of what member Owens is being on his bill and what we're reflecting on the agenda packet is what the rate currently stands at, if someone could resolve that discrepancy.
So his bill includes tax as well as the $1 administrative fee.
Yeah, I think
Will be added back to the rates we're talking about tonight.
Yeah, I think, I think the net result is that, that there would be a slightly higher cost on everybody's bill because the base rate would go up slightly.
We calculated it would be about a 5.3% increase.
Yeah, it's 5.3% increase adjusted from the 2% that is lowered. So if it's lower, if, if the first two items that they calculated with fuel cost takes it down to 17.2, and that's the base rate, then they go up to 11, 18.11, and that's the 5.3 increase. So what they're requesting is to go from 17.2, which is inarguable at this point, to go to the 18.11, which is what they feel like they have the right to negotiate and whether it's ours to approve. So the bill's going to go up.
So one thing that I, I would like to add maybe, so currently right now, the base rate is 1758. And then you add in the dollar admin fee. It gets you to 1858. But with the 2% decrease in fuel, it brings the base rate down to 1723. And then when you add the dollar admin fee, you're at 1823. So we're saying that we would like to increase to the 1811 for the base rate, but then you're going to take the fuel adjustment out of that. So with it a 2% for this next quarter, the base rate's still going to be to the 1775. So the 1811 does not include the fuel adjustment, the decrease.
So that, that the 1811 does not include the, that's, I mean, the request is to move the base rate to the 1811.
Yeah, that's what I read in the, in the write-up.
Yeah, every.
Letter doesn't indicate that then there's a reduction off of that for the fuel.
Yeah, every quarter, the fuel is looked at per the contract. So every quarter, like the fuel just was posted for today for October. So it's still a negative 2%. And then the end of December, the fuel will be posted for the first quarter of 2020, 20, I'm sorry, 2021.
If we approved the motion as it's, as it's written, your base rate would be 18.11.
And then you, fuel is calculated off of that base rate. So we would take the, the fuel off of that base rate.
So after consulting with Darren, and I know he's not here to defend himself, but Darren's interpretation and my review of the contract and, and consulting with him is that the fuel surcharge, the 9.02 portion of the contract actually changes the base rate. It doesn't, it's not applied to a base rate that's set annually. It actually change, it changes the base rate itself. So that's how we came up with the calculation shown at the bottom of the second page of the agenda request of the reduction from down to 17.20.
Trent, do you think we may maybe need some a little, a little clarification between you and Waste Management on what the, what the rate should be and the resolution should before we move forward?
You know, I think we communicated that that's how we saw that it needed to be calculated and asked them to take a look at their letter and then we, because there was an original letter that they revised and this is what we got. So if there's a different request, then they need to make that, I think.
Okay.
We're very clear from our side about what the contract reads. And so as Trent mentioned, we've been in discussion with them and the request is as we've presented it right now. So it's only up to you to decide whether you want to grant that sign or not.
Or, or we could postpone until everybody gets on the same page.
With that, I don't know that there's a different page it will come off of, so.
Can I?
There are two different things. The base rate's going to be 17.75 or 18.11, and I'm not sure which one is necessarily accurate. I'm not saying that anybody's wrong. I'm just, right now, what appears that Shane is saying that the, the rate in the resolution is not necessarily the rate that they would charge. And so I, I feel a little uncomfortable moving forward, just not knowing where, where that, where that differential is.
So historically, when we looked back, so the base rates are established once a year in October based on CPI. And then every quarter, those rates, that one rate that we give the city once a year will go, it's always gone down. It's never gone up or it stayed at 0%. That fuel is based in changing those once, one time a year established rates. So in October, when we give those annual rates that are CPI, those are the rates that are established for the year. And then each quarter, the fuel is deducted depending on what fuel does each quarter. So historically, going back, I think I started working on this contract in 2016 and, and that's how it's historically been calculated in the past.
So if I'm understanding, we would adopt a base rate, if, if we approve your request, we'd adopt a base rate of 18.11. And then each quarter, you would adjust based on the fuel CPI. And right now, you would say that deducted from the 18.11 base rate, that would get us to a current rate of 17.75.
Correct. And so then we would look in at the end of December and depending on what fuel does, depending if, you know, it remains the same, if it goes up or down, then we would adjust the rate according to the 18.11, whether it's still 2%, so it would still be 17.75, or if it's 1%.
Yeah, I think, I think maybe let's throw out the 17.75 because I think it's just. Trent, does that, does that seem to make, does that explanation seem to make sense to you based on your standard of contract?
So my experience is, doesn't go as far back, but, um, you know, in reading the contract and consulting with Darren on the contract, if it's been done that way in the past, it's been applied incorrectly. And so, you know, I don't, you know, i- if, so if that, if that's the number they need to get to, I think that's the number they need to, to, to request.
Why don't I just do this? Why don't I, if, if, since there just appears to be a little bit of confusion, can we just postpone to the next meeting? And see if we can, we can get everybody on the same page about what the agenda item needs to read and then we can revisit it then?
I think it's more of a, we need to make sure we're, that between us and Waste Management, there's the same understanding of how the contract reads. And they need to make a request in accordance with that.
It's really up to Waste Management to request the dollar amount for the base that they want. And then the contract will dictate the, the other elements of it. So they need, they, we've tried to ask them what they were requesting for the base and you've seen that and that's what, that's what's before you, so.
Okay. I don't think it's going to hurt us to wait a, a week or two to, to just make sure that we're comfortable, that everybody's on the same page. Because if I, if you're hearing different things, I don't question, I, I don't question the legitimacy of the different understandings. I just want to make sure that everybody's on the same understanding.
Again, we, we, we're open this with them for a few weeks. And one thing may be to see if there's interest on the part of the council for a consensus to entertain any increase in the base at all. Because otherwise, if there's not, I heard at least one member that said they weren't.
On the fact that if they don't vote for the postponement, then we're probably going to vote to vote on the, on the rate. So I, I'll offer a motion to postpone this to the next council meeting. If I get a second, then we can vote on that and see if there's.
I'll second. Okay. Oh, wait a minute. Clay, let me ask you a question. What we're seeing is customer base rate of $18.11. Is there anything added to that on a monthly that was the increase set from 18.11?
Yes. What you see on the bill is the dollar administrative fee and the sales tax to, to name just a couple of things.
Yeah. And we're only talking about, what, 10 months from now or something like that? If we, if we approve this now, it may cost you, you know, in that period of time, maybe $3 more or something like that on the base rate. Because the base rate is cheaper now than what, what we're paying as an individual, so.
I, I, I don't, I don't think that's true, member, member Owens.
We have a motion and a second to postpone this. I think we need to vote on that.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay. You want to move it on, motion circuit on it? Okay. Madam Secretary.
I'm sorry, go ahead, mayor. I believe this motion is to postpone to the October 12th city council meeting. Is that correct?
Yes, next regular meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you. Member Perez?
Hi.
Member Owens?
No.
Member Orlando?
No.
Member Carbone?
No.
Member Little?
Yes.
Member Hernandez?
He's abstained.
Recused.
That's right. All right. Member Moore?
Yes.
We have a tie, 3 to 3. Mayor Reed?
I'm saying yes.
All right.
All right, we'll.
The motion to postpone this item to the October 12th regular meeting, the motion carries 4 to 3.
We'll package that up and bring it back to you next time.
Thank you, Clay. Thank you, Shauna.
Okay. Okay, mayor, we're on. Why don't we, why don't we move to item number eight on our agenda? Mayor, council issues for council consideration discussion? None. Other business? None. And at 9:09, I am adjourning this meeting.
Go Chiefs.
We get this question a lot of how did we come up with the name Queen Bling? And I wish my mom could have been here today, but she would definitely be the queen part of it. And I would probably be more the bling part of it. I've always had a fascination with jewelry and accessories.